Thank you all for coming tonight. I ask that you please stand for the flag of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, in the goodness of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Sorry I was late, I had a slow.
It will be, we'll deal with that later.
We're going to dock his pay.
Your pay is going to be docked, that's right.
Your pay is going to be docked.
Okay.
We're going to move to public comment. If you have a, is that, sell now, sell now. If you have a comment, please come up here and sit and state your name before you get started, if you would. And keep in mind, please try to keep these comments to what's not on the agenda, so then we will be able to address agenda items later.
Absolutely, yeah.
So Zach, thanks for joining us.
Backseat's a little quieter back there. This is Zach Scheffler, I'm from San Almond City. I just wanted to extend a quick thank you for the July 16 event, the community rally for togetherness, all the help, members here. Just going to shout out Jim Pelkey for spreading the word, Chad, the bubbles were a huge success, and I still have some of the leftovers.
I'm glad they worked.
And just the, just, I just want to thank you all for participating, the respect, the participation, and the joy that we had that day was palpable, and it was awesome. And you all were part of that, and I just have to thank you. And that's all I have to say for now, but seriously, like, I really appreciate it, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Zach.
Anyone else for a public comment?
Angie, come on up. Thank you for joining us. Thanks for thanking me. I'm Angie Stern from Ward 4. I'll take my mask off to speak. I'm here in, with my hands free, because my baby's not with me, but I almost had to have her here tonight. And that would have illustrated the point that I wanted to make tonight, which is that I really hope that we can continue to make Zoom a regular part of a way to attend city council meetings from now on. I was, I think, you know, during the, during, when we had to stay home and were forced to play with Zoom, which I don't think anyone really enjoys that much, I was able to finally make it to some meetings, and I had a newborn. If I had my baby here right now, she would be pulling my hair and scratching me and trying to get this microphone, and then she would want to climb all over the place, and I would not get to focus on what I want to listen to our city doing. And there are a lot of parents with little kids in this town, and being a parent, you know, doesn't, it's not like, okay, now I'll take some time out from participating in the community. If we need anyone here, it's the people whose kids are going to grow up here and who are so invested in it. So I am, I just really wanted us to think about that, even if it's a little awkward, and it's, it's not just for parents, it's for, like, my friend who, who fell and hurt both arms this, this summer and is just recuperating, and for people who are permanently disabled and for other temporary reasons, like exposure to COVID, just can't make it. So, thanks, I hope that this can be part of the conversation.
Thank you, Angie.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Barbara Finch, and I guess I just want to echo the request to have Zoom continued. My ability to walk on a given evening, depending on how the day has been, is variable. And on the evenings when I wouldn't be able to attend, I would love to be able to still come via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to make the comments sound like a broken record, but I do think we should keep the Zoom available. Like, it's, I can, I can sort of see the point of, it's kind of nicer to talk in person, but I think that you have to weigh that against the ability for people to participate. I do think that ability to participate should be a higher priority on, if you're balancing those two things.
And your name is, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, Laura Oshin.
Thank you, Laura. Let me, I don't mean to be rude, but let's, let's see, so not everyone has to come up and sound like a broken record. Why don't we show a, a show of hands for those who would agree with that, with those comments? Okay? Do any of you feel the need to come to the microphone? Okay? We recognize all of those opinions, and we thank you for that. And I don't mean to cut anyone off, but if it was going to be the same, then, so, is there anything else that anyone would like to comment on? Okay? Now we're going to-
Mr. Mayor, do you want to ask the folks on Zoom?
Yeah. Is there anyone on the Zoom channel that would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda?
I was just, sorry, Tanner McHill in Ward 1. I was going to come in tonight, but a front of mine recently contacted me and said that I may have been exposed to COVID, so I'm staying at home, which just helps to illustrate the point that other people here were making tonight. Not only a matter of public health, but of accessibility, as everybody else pointed out, Zoom is, has been a really great service that I think we should continue using. I also wanted to just quickly thank everybody, like as Zach did, for their participation, the aid that the city provided as far as materials, chairs, tables, we were enthusiasm. It was great to see, look forward to working with the city more in the future on projects. And that's it, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, Tanner. Anyone else on the Zoom channel that would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the first agenda reading, which is item number three, first reading, an ordinance to regulate vehicle noise. And let me just, before I turn it over to you, I was just sharing a short story. I was walking over here tonight, walking past Quigs, and a very loud vehicle went by, and a, a customer of Quig stopped me and said, hey, is there anything we can do about? And I pulled down the paperwork, and I said, yes, we're, we're all over it, so, thank you for your work on that. I don't know about the rest of the council, but that's one of the biggest complaints I hear. Quality of life, noise issues within, not just Main Street, but the different neighborhoods as well. So, I turn it over to you, Don.
Thank you. So this is in response to this longstanding conversation about how to get our arms around this issue. I'd invite Mick to join us. Mick's our lead draft person, the attorney of McNeely and Sheen. And, you know, just by way of framing it up a little bit, this is an ordinance, and so out of necessity, it gets pretty granular. I suspect it'll be kind of an iterative or collaborative conversation, figuring out where you want to go with some of this. I've had a couple of calls from folks that thinks it went too far, and others who thinks it didn't go far enough. So, we can amend it as you see fit. Some of you might have deeper experience with motor vehicle modifications than Mick and I. So, the, with that, I'll turn it over to Mick to walk us through the salient features of it.
Yeah, thanks, Dominic. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here. As Dominic said, we're kind of the drafters of this, but we also pulled a lot of the language from other municipalities, cities in Vermont. Rutland, Berry, Montpelier, Burlington, and a few other municipalities have similar ordinances on their books, specifically addressing vehicle noise. And so what this is, is a kind of a combination of some of the good language that we found around the state, so as not to reinvent the wheel, but it also does specifically address vehicle noise. So it talks about enforcing unreasonable noise from stereos and amplification systems of vehicles, as well as noise coming from the actual operation of the vehicle itself, and then also specifically noise coming from a muffler of a vehicle. So I'm happy to answer questions, get into some of the details of the ordinance, but that's broad strokes what we've done here, and put it together, hopefully to address some of the, some of the issues that have, that have arisen.
Nick, in your, in your discussion with other towns, did you get any feedback from those towns as to the effectiveness of something of this nature?
Great question. Just to be clear, we did not actually discuss with other towns, more just researched the other towns' ordinances. But I guess the short answer is no, we didn't, we didn't get any feedback, and I have not found anything in terms of effectiveness of these ordinances, but some of them have been on the books for, for years, and we didn't, we didn't come across any case law or any issues in Vermont dealing with this. I will note that the legislature, this past session, I think in January, introduced a bill to add a section to the defective vehicle statute under Title 23, to specifically address mufflers, and modifications to mufflers, and, you know, kind of aftermarket additions to cars. That was, as of the legislative session ending, was still in a committee, but, you know, that is, it appears that the ball is rolling in that direction to address, Mr. Mayor, some of the issues that, that you raised.
And then I, I think I shared with Don at one point, did I say where New York, New York State is putting something through, probably very similar on the state level?
Possibly.
In terms of aftermarket?
Uh, that, that may be the case. I know, for instance, Maine has a statute in the books, and has for some years, specifically addressing that. And I think there is a, there is a move towards making that law at the state level around the country.
Council?
Mike, can you, can you talk to that?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could give you an hour-long lecture about the history of this issue in the legislature. Now, what it basically boils down to, I think, is that the experience that we've heard from Department of Motor Vehicles, and for folks who don't know, I've been in the legislature and served two terms on the House Transportation Committee, and this issue's a perennial one, because communities like ours are really facing increasing amounts of vehicle modification. There's a culture, you know, I don't know if people might, it's growing up on the Fast and Furious, and the popularity of, of all of that has created this culture of vehicle modification. That combined with, you know, the modification of motorcycles in order to make them louder, and some folks feel like that's a safety issue in and of itself, has just created this environment where if you're sitting out on the street or out on your porch and a vehicle goes by, there's frequently this overwhelming amount of noise coming from vehicles, and it is one of the complaints I think all of us get. But the enforceability of statute, and whether our law enforcement officers can prioritize one of our resources there, I think a lot of the questions I have are more for Chief Lamont than they are for Nick. You know, so, yeah, so, you know, it's the, you know, I've heard law enforcement at the state level, and from other communities that came into the House Transportation Committee over the years, talk about how difficult it is to be the bad guy, you know, enforcing the vehicular noise ordinances, especially when people have put a lot of money into making their cars louder, modifying them. And, and so it tends to not be prioritized, and therefore the effectiveness of this kind of ordinance or law or statute at the state level has, you know, really been difficult. I like some of what Representative Chase's bill is trying to do. It is in the House Transportation Committee, and I think the chairman of the House wants to take it up, but the idea there is about decibels, right? It's a, it's a sound-based ordinance, and this one's like plainly audible at a distance, so I'd love to hear Mick comment on sort of the difference in the choice there, but the enforcement, you know, if, if you're going to have law enforcement officers out there with a decibel meter with every vehicle, and then getting a cruiser and chasing down the person who had the loud exhaust noise, that's a big investment in our community resources. And I wonder if what we really need to do is, is make it so that if your vehicle is modified, it can't pass inspection, and that might be another way to deal with that at the state level, that I'd be happy to try to pursue conversations about in this coming session, but that's all the comments there.
I'm okay with this, except for the horn. Horns are used for a lot of different things. I don't ever call the person who came up to me and said, I'm having a real problem with people honking their horns. All the other things I have heard people have problems with.
Where's the horn, Tim?
Down on the, it's the last one on the violation of vehicular noise, 3-
3/6.
C subsection 6.
Well, I, you know- Might tend to differ a little bit on that.
I think that a lot of people use the horn for a lot of things, but they-
But sitting in front of somebody's house and tooting on the horn, waiting for them to come out and get in the damn car, instead of walking up and, and getting that is a violation.
Is that much of a menace as somebody speeding up the road or downshifting, coming down the road with a modified exhaust system?
No, of course not, but I don't think the horn should come out of there for that rea, for that reason, like I mentioned.
I just don't, there are so many things that a horn is used for that is not menacing, that I don't want a person who does it in that manner to be subjected to a, some kind of traffic violation, whether it's a time of day, or a length of horn sound, or something like that. But for someone to drive by a porch and honk the horn and wave to some people that are on, you know, on the porch, I don't think that's a violation here.
I agree.
There should be a violation here, but in this particular ordinance, it is a violation.
So maybe-
And I don't want to make this objective for a police officer to say, well, they're doing this, but he wasn't doing that, so I guess I'm going to go get this guy today. I, I want that out of the game.
So it should be better defined.
Either that or out or removed, because we can always add it back in if it ever became a problem.
Disconnect Mary's horn might help, too, I would think.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'll tell her that.
But the way it stands now is unacceptable. That's all I, that's the only problem I have with this ordinance.
Mayor?
Just a couple of, and I don't know if it means anything or not, but in the section re, um, both, I like this ordinance, Mick, I like the sound, the sound amplification from the stereos with the bass, which is the biggest, but on the restricted uses and activities, you're, you're using language 75 feet in any direction from the operator, 50 feet in any direction from the operator, and then when you get to the vehicular noise section, you're saying 50 feet from the vehicle, 75 feet from the vehicle, and I just think they should be consistent, they should be the same. I can see somebody challenging that somewhere of great respect.
That's a good point. Mick, I had a question, and I'd put it to the council as well. I wonder if we need to have a section specifically on mufflers, or if that can be captured in the vehicular noise section?
I think it-
What's your thinking there?
You know, a lot of the ordinances that we've seen have specifically set out mufflers, specifically that main statute that I referenced. I think it could be kind of consumed within the vehicle noise, but, you know, I think there's a distinction also between noise from a defective vehicle, there is, there is a statute in Title 23, and that you cannot operate a defective vehicle. So officers can pull over vehicles if they notice that the noise is reasonably coming from a defective vehicle. The distinction here, I think, is, you know, this is something that, that someone has done to the muffler specifically, and I think that, that carve out of mufflers is in response to what Councilor McCarthy says, that, you know, that we're kind of seeing a lot of this stuff going on recently, but I think probably six to one, half a dozen to the other, in terms of putting it in the vehicular noise section.
So I am one that called Don and said, I think this goes too far. The first thing that, I prefer something like Mike was saying, more of a decibel level. 1B4 has people coming to the, to the city council to get permission for a sound, for some sound amplification system. I prefer not to have anyone coming to the city council to ask us to do that at a city council meeting. 2B, whenever, basically it says if anyone has modified their exhaust system from the original, so basically they can sit there at the Kingling Street Classic and slap a sticker on every one of those cars.
Unless they were given permission by the council?
Unless they were given permission. So even, every one of them would have to come in here.
Or the event.
Or the event, or, so anyone, anytime one of those cars wants to drive in the city, they have to come here to get permission to drive in the city. So, and I, I'm going to fully admit, our truck, we bought from Handys, it originally had one exhaust, it has dual exhaust now. I, there were a few people sitting outside, and I think I came in reasonable, who probably couldn't tell that I had a modified exhaust.
I don't know, but I'm going to listen for you for now.
I'm going to rap in front of your house.
You did come in early.
So I just think that, for me, this is just, you're going to get a lot of people that you're not intended to get, and I think, to me, this is just, it's going to end up, we're profiling, we're just profiling, you know, kids. So, I mean, I agree, we need to do something. I prefer to see some, some kind of decibel level, or, or something like that. And some of these cars, I mean, there's one section unnecessary and unreasonable, I mean, whose opinion is that? My opinion probably differs from Tim's.
Law enforcement officer, that's what they do, they determine what's-
Again, that if you get someone that wants, that's having a bad day, you could have driven by him 20 times, and they didn't, and then this-
Sure, happens all the time, that's life, as I say.
So, I just, I just feel if, if my car's passed inspection, I should, I should have no problem driving in and out here. If I'm driving like an idiot, 3C1 and 2, I'm pretty sure those are CNNs, squealing, you're doing burnouts?
It's not a CNN, but it is.
It's a ticket about, in itself, so I mean, we don't even need to have that in here, because it's a, and you don't have control of your vehicle. So, well, I mean, it's fine to be in here, I just think it's, it's, I think we're-
Chad, can I ask a car culture question?
I may be able to answer.
So when he's modified exhaust, like, isn't it about how you drive it?
It is.
Like, you can drive it so that it sounds like a normal car, right?
Did you hear me pull in?
No.
And we have a totally modified from a cat-back exhaust.
So it's like part of the culture is how you drive it, and, and, like, there's a timing with drawing attention to oneself and all that stuff, and it doesn't have so much to do with the, maybe sometimes with the car.
So the, the one that went by when Councilor McCarthy was speaking, that was, I'm going to go from five to 30 as fast as I can here in front, so everyone can see and hear me. That, if they would have driven by normally, we probably wouldn't have, wouldn't have known that.
And there are modifications that are for performance, like the dual exhaust, and then there are modifications that have been made increasingly recently, where they're just for noise. I mean, there's no way that some of those, like fart box style, that they're just to make the car sound louder, that's all it is. I mean, it does not make the car perform any better. So, it depends on what the modification is.
To me, I do the five whys, and the why doesn't come back to the modification, it comes back more to the, I'm going, I want to, like Angie said, I want to drive fast, I want to draw attention. So, I, I think a couple of years ago, when, when Mike and his family put out the Quiet Year Ride, I think we missed a big opportunity there, it was really, I was telling Don, it should have been Slow Year Ride, because if we're driving at a reasonable speed, we don't hear these as much. So, I mean, the motorcycles go down my street, the ones that drive nice, don't bother me, the ones that think they need to go 060 on my little side street, those are the ones that bother me.
Yeah, I, I do agree with that. Also, I was really happy to see this ordinance come out, because we, we just had a neighborhood watch meeting last week, and that was the big complaint from everybody that was there, we had about 12 people, and they all complained about the same thing, loud mufflers. We discussed, like, you know, when you're eating out in parking lots or in malls or any of those places. I mean, I'm not crazy about smelling everybody's exhaust when they sit there and they rev it while they're sitting there, traffic light or whatever. So I really think that, that this, this at least gives us a starting place, and with a little bit of fine tuning available, I think it's a, it's a good ordinance, and I, I'm glad that we're doing it, I'm glad that we're doing something about it. And if, in the case where somebody gets stopped, is it within an officer's right to take the inspection station? No. And then possibly find the, the garage? No.
Doesn't work that way. If a car passed inspection at the time it was inspected.
Yeah, that would be a stretch.
Well, it's not inspection issue either, it's a third of the record.
They may, they may only inspect it at the time it's inspected, but they did that because all they did say is they modified, happened inspection, or they were aware of the inspection.
Right.
But if anyone's having a season inspection sticker, everything, so it's still, it doesn't come back to them.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Yep.
Counsel, any other comments?
I just want, I just want to add, I like, I like the idea, I think, you know, we're three quarters of the way there, it's the same person, and we just went a little too far.
Thank you, Jeff. You have a comment?
Oh, hey?
Yep.
Yeah, well, I guess, I'm not sure, I don't, is this published online? I'm not sure with-
It's in the, it's in the council packet.
In the council packet.
Do you want my copy?
Oh, sure. I'm just, I'm just curious, what's wrong with the municipal code we just signed in the center of 2020? Because I feel like we covered all this, we just haven't ever enforced it. And I'm not sure why we're talking about, you know, having so much sympathy for someone who deliberately paid money and had extra money, and instead of doing something good with it, used it to make their vehicle more annoying, just kind of assault everyone. And I take exception to that idea, that doesn't, you can have a modified exhaust, and it's just how you drive it. I mean, I have neighbors, whether they're trying or not, as soon as they start up, my windows are rattling, and they back out, and as soon as they get out, they come back firing all down the street, and you all don't know why, I say, well, as a kid, I don't know why my mom gave me tickets for it, because she couldn't afford to keep her car to me properly. It was embarrassing, and no one thought about her, you know, like, why do we think about these people that obviously have extra money, and made a deliberate choice to disregard everyone else's right to peace and enjoyment and quiet? We shouldn't be talking about this, as far as they're concerned about how we enforce it. Let's start writing tickets and see what happens, you know, worry about it then, let's not guess what the fine points are. I mean, there's no reason we couldn't have, I mean, even before 2020, these are basically what we had, you know, 10 years before, they're in the 2012 code, too. So I don't know why we're rewriting it, instead of just working what we have, but if we keep trying to kind of guess how it's going to work out, or, you know, have some people, I mean, the police are not, should not be making friends with people that are hurting other people. I heard that comment at the last one, quality of life is not a priority, and, you know, with the atmosphere right now, the police are just trying to make friends, it's like, I don't want you making friends with someone who's hurting me. Basically, that's not, that's not what you're here for, and I shouldn't have to be trying to deal with it myself, that's why we have police, that's why we have ordinances. So, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Just one suggestion, Don. I know we changed the trash ordinance to the Pelkey Trash Ordinance, maybe this should be the Spooner-
I wanted to name it.
The Spooner Noise Ordinance.
Yeah, Spooner, yeah.
Now, what, what's your next steps? What do you want to do?
Why don't you let Mick and I continue to refine it a little bit, and, you know, we, we'll analyze why we think this is better than what's on the books from 2020, and try to bring something back at the next meeting that maybe could be accepted as first reading.
Comment?
I don't know if we have a public comment, I'm a little bit confused of the process.
Yeah, no, we're, yes, public comment.
You're still thinking? Okay, fine, I just wanted a chance to say something.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. My name's never there. I'm wondering, I haven't looked at the draft online, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was available. Does this apply to people in our driveway as well as on the street? Because that's a problem, too. It's not just people who are driving on city, thank you so much, on city streets, the people that live behind me, and I didn't know this was going to come up, see, run some sort of garage, I think, out of their driveway, and they are constantly wrecking vehicles, motorcycles, just for hours in the evening. And it's before noise ordinance time, so I didn't think there was anything that I could do about it, but I would like the idea of this, because this would address that, but only if it talks about, but only if it would address it in a private driveway, and not just a city street.
Mick, I don't recall, does that specify one way or the other?
Yeah, as, as it's drafted, there's no specification that has to be on a public roadway. I mean, it's, it's going to be the, the noise of the vehicle, so if you can hear it from, you know, the distance and during the times, then it would be a violation.
Thank you.
Does the, I'm afraid it's not.
It's already covered, and the ordinance we already got, too, to just provide enforcement. So, and if you don't have a copy of the city zoning regs, you might want to pick them up. We do have things, definitions of, like, home occupations. You said somebody's running a garage, if they're running a garage, and they don't have a permit to do that, you could bring that, you could bring that to the attention of the zoning ministry.
I don't think it's official, I think that they just have their friends bring all their cars over to the garage, they do stuff in it. And I wouldn't object to that, except they are right on the power line. And I wouldn't object to that, except they are right on the parry line, and my whole house vibrates more when I do this.
And another comment?
Uh, yeah, I mean, just another perspective. I mean, we talked about the public safety aspect and the quality of life aspect, but there's also the matter of livelihood. I took part in the ARQ last month. And Saturday morning is just the time, I guess. And it was not a place where I, if I had been a customer, where I would have been. You know, it just, it was really noisy. And I don't know how much of a turn that was for other people as well, but...
Where, where was that? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Right here, on Main Street.
Oh, for the, for the car show, you're saying?
Yes.
And the ARQ.
The ARQ.
All right, so, Dom, you... Don, keep working on it. Have a conversation. Take it from there. So, okay. Thank you all. Nice job, man.
Is that you, Colonel, or is that... Marty?
We're gonna move on to, uh, item number four, which is Presentation of Draft Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Dom, and everyone has a, one pager in your packet. We'll turn over to you, Dom.
Yeah, thanks. The, this is something that several counselors, myself, have been kicking around for a little bit over the last few months. And then Neighbors for a Safe for St. Albans came forth with a similar theme, I think, a couple of meetings ago. So taking both of those threads and trying, tried to merge them into one document. This document creates a committee. The, I'll just try to give you the highlights of the document here. Sounds like not everybody has it. But the, the name of the committee is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. Begins that the city of St. Albans values diversity, equity, and inclusion. We seek to foster a sense of belonging among our citizens. Over Main Street, our welcome banner proclaims, "All are welcome here." Continues in the next paragraph. "In order to achieve this vision, we must engage more with the members of our community who have not always felt a sense of belonging in our city. We must seek to understand the experience of marginalized groups and the manner in which our implicit biases can impact the delivery of city services, programs, and events." The, it continues a couple paragraphs later and creates the committee. It's an advisory committee, and it lists four objectives. "To identify and present projects and initiatives that could advance the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Organize programs and events that recognize the diversity that exists within the city. Facilitate engagement in groups that have not traditionally participated in city government. And advise city staff and the city council on ways the city can achieve the vision of all are welcome here." Establishes some priorities out of the gate. And says it will be comprised of seven members appointed by the council. Members will serve staggered terms of four one-year terms and three two-year terms. The city will provide a menetaker and appoint the chair and vice chair. Anyone have any questions of Dom?
I have a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Go ahead, Bob.
I, I'm going to, I think this DEI idea is a wonderful idea. I learned a lot during the month of June when Araya and a number of other people spoke in favor of it, and I've done some research on it. And so I will end up voting for this. I think it's a wonderful idea. But I've also got some concerns about the, sort of the negative overlay that it's in the second and third paragraphs, especially the sentence that talks about, "We do not know what we do not know, and this can lead to experiences." I think what we eventually end up with should be a little bit more on the positive side. So during, during some reading, I came across, the governor has a task force on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I came across that. I think you may have used that also because it originated from the BCLT. And they talk in a more positive way about, "We must focus on the positive in our communities and lean on tools to help ensure inclusivity and vibrancy. We must work proactively to honor and uphold the dignity of all citizens of Ramon." So I, I'm totally in favor of this committee, but I, I'd like the preamble, if you would, to be a little more on the positive and upswing side.
Thank you, Bob. James?
I have a, I also have a problem with a portion of the preamble, but not the portion that Bob has. First of all, because I want to couch my comments very carefully, okay? I'm very much in favor of this committee. There's a lot of smarter people in this city than I am that could educate me on what we need to do to make the people feel like they belong here. Okay, so let's get that out of the way first. I'm in favor of this ordinance. Or this committee, I'm sorry. What I'm not, what I don't like is the sentence in the second paragraph. "We must seek to understand the experiences of marginalized groups in the manner in which," these are the two words I don't like. "Our implicit biases can impact the delivery of city services, programs, and events." I may be in a minority, but implicit bias to me, I equate with what you're hearing in the national news about institutional bias. And I don't, and I definitely do not agree that this country has any institutional bias. I don't believe this city has any implicit biases against our marginalized citizens. You know, I, I know there's biases. There's individual biases, there's employment biases, there's political biases, cultural, geographic. There's all, but these are all, these are all from the, from the individual. I do not believe anywhere in the city do we try to make these minorities and, and the LGBTQ feel like second-class citizens or non-citizens. So I, I don't like that, those two, those two words. If you wanted to make that in which our actions can impact the delivery of city services, I could, I could live with that, but I don't like implicit bias. That's right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. So, Jim, when I was growing up, you know, I, I was raised and teachers and the most well-meaning and loving people in the world basically, you know, taught me the same thing that you're saying, that racism is in a person's heart, that it's about the individual. But in the work that we've been doing in this community, in the state, in our country, trying to understand the experience of everybody, what we keep finding over and over and over again is that the experience of a black person that goes to get services or interacts with the police is statistically different than the experience of a very similarly positioned white person. And over and over and over again, whether it's in healthcare or education or criminal justice system, the systems that we have in our society, the institutions that we as people in the government have some power over, they treat marginalized people, they treat LGBTQ individuals, the systems treat them differently. It is undeniable fact that there are disparities in the experience of people that look or identify one way, and people who look and identify as especially white men like you and me. And, and so I, like, I was raised with that message, that like, this is just about bad people. When racist things happen, it's about bad people. And just everything that I've learned, you know, all of this work that we've been doing, and I know I still have a lot more learning to do, is just that we have systems that were built for people that look like you and me. They just work, and they were built by people who look like you and me. And I, and, and so I think it's important for us to be serious about this and that have it be meaningful for to say, hey, we, we know, we know that government systems throughout our society, local, state, federal government, treat some people one way and other people another way. And so we want to actually look at that. We want to take a really, we want to hold up a mirror to ourselves, invite some perspective from people in our community that have had different experiences than some of us here on the council, and have them tell us, hey, if you did this, people in our community would feel better. If you changed this policy, it would serve people better. And I don't think we're gonna solve these problems overnight with this DEI committee, or if we call it a committee for belonging. And there's been some comments about what we should actually call it. But, but I think that acknowledgement that, that the systems themselves, the, the tiny subtle decisions that the clerk makes, that Dominic makes, that we all make here on the council, because we all come with our own experience, and most of us have a similar experience, at least in terms of our, our race, that are in power here in the city. I think just acknowledging that here is a signal to people that were serious about doing this DEI work. And if we don't acknowledge it, I, I think it's a signal that we're not serious about really taking on the, the problems that I think overwhelmingly have been identified in terms of the different experience that people have.
I tend to disagree with you, Mike, because I think if we go ahead and create this committee, which I think is a great idea, a great committee, even, it's actually a little bit more limited than I thought it might be. But anyway, if we create this committee, I don't think it matters what our philosophy is going into it. In terms of what Jim said about implicit biases, there's a difference of opinion on that in whether this, our government and our people are systemically racist or prejudiced against other groups or not. And I don't think it matters, if we create this committee, how deeply we get into our philosophy.
That's just my feeling.
I mean, other than what you, other than the initial, the original part of what you said, Mike, I agree with you. I mean, we need people to come to us. I need somebody to come to me and say, this is what's going wrong. This is what you gotta do to fix it. I'm ready to help fix it, once they tell me what it is it needs fixing. But I'm not gonna sit here and automatically say, every, every, every function in the city is implicitly biased, because I'm not in a position to feel that we are that way. And I'm not going to accept that portion of this ordinance. And maybe we're different than national, maybe we're not. And maybe somebody's gonna, at some point, tell me, maybe somebody will tell me I'm wrong. And I hope they do. But, but, but right now, that's how I feel. And I'm just saying honestly how I feel, okay?
Just pulling a clarification, the drafting intent wasn't to speak to institutional impact. It was individual impact based on our, the paths that we've traveled as individuals. I wasn't, I don't know if that helps or hurts, but...
Individual impact, but, but then we wouldn't need that, those two words, implicit biases.
All right, I think a lot of, I think it can... The intent was coming out of my own experience and recognizing my own biases, which I don't even think of them, therefore they're implicit, right? And you put all of that together, then maybe you get some institutional action. But it was more the individual that I was trying to capture there, not the institutional impact.
Okay. All right, and maybe I'm all right on that. If I am, I apologize, but I was just, I just, I have, I have issues with that. Like I, like Bob said, and Mike, because we have differences of opinion, so... But the fact, the fact that there are issues with marginalized people, there's, undoubtedly that there is, and we need to address that. That's where I'm at, sorry.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mike, Bob. Any other council members have comments? So I, for one, also support this. I think it's, it can be, we could have some great outcomes from it. Let's go to the general public. Mike says we're not voting on it tonight.
Well, this, this is not a present, no, wait. I just want, I want the framing, just so that everybody knows, this isn't something we're gonna vote on at the end of public comment.
We're gonna take vote comment and revise accordingly. Ryan, if you want to go ahead?
Uh, yeah, so I actually, Dom, Matt was gracious enough to send me a copy of this. And I was able, I'm a copy editor by career for the most part, and so I was able, nothing I like more than looking at a document and chopping it up. But for the most part, I think...
Do you do, do you do private work, Ryan?
I do a lot of chopping, but maybe I could just pass around what I, what I did do and just talk about it for just a couple of minutes. I do want to say that for me and for neighbors for a safe for St. Albans who felt like belonging was a better word.
Come on, Aravio.
We felt like belonging was a better word.
Than diversity?
Than diversity. Diversity are numbers, diversity is, it's a bridge word. And so a lot of the DEIs we see right now, which are, it's using diversity as a bridge word, and in two years, you're gonna see all these things, these groups changing to belonging. Belonging is a sense you get, it's a feeling of being welcome. And in a small town, belonging is like the number one thing, right? Like, small towns are all about belonging. And so when I looked at this, I, I reached out to people like Preston Fuller. I asked him about the liturgical hymn. I asked him, what was the purpose of that? Like, is that, is that, is there, does that serve a purpose there? And he said, no, not really. And I kind of agreed, it felt like it...
I'm sorry, what, which one was it?
Oh, sorry, in the first, in the first paragraph at the end, it says timeless message derived from the liturgical hymn. It kind of feels like it cuts it off at the legs, having an equity committee where you're talking about a liturgical hymn. Just seems weird to have it there.
Has to Preston's church, I'm just saying.
There are a couple like little, it said or, and it should be of, that's just an easy mistake. I, I included historically marginalized groups because I felt like, we want, that's, that's how we refer to groups now historically marginalized, because there are certainly members of that group who are not marginalized. Barack Obama is not marginalized in any way. Shaquille O'Neal, you go through a list of people who are not marginalized anymore. But historically, those groups have been marginalized. And I just want to say, to that effect, marginalization, marginalization is the effect, it, it's the effect of implicit bias, right? So when we think about implicit bias, we think about things that aren't purposeful. We think about the way in which we look at someone who may be Middle Eastern, and we all have it. It's not just white people who have implicit bias. We all have implicit bias. When you're on a plane, maybe if I'm on a plane and a person of Middle Eastern descent gets on, my heart goes a little quicker. I don't have control over that. I don't want that, I don't think that person is a bomb, a bomber, or someone who's gonna hurt me. But my, my training in, in my society, in society has taught me that that is dangerous for me. And so I feel, I feel threatened. So I, I think we just, I just want to be clear that implicit bias isn't something that you can control or change, but it's something you can address within yourself and realize like, why do I think that way? And that's what implicit bias, implicit bias training is. It's really to, to show us like, why am I thinking that that person is a criminal when they're just walking down the street with a backpack? What about that gives me that feeling? And then below it, just more belonging, and, and, and then for the bullet points, I, I kind of put together those last two bullet points as priorities and moved them up. And, and I talked to a couple of people in the neighbors group who felt like it, it felt like it trivialized the group a little bit, like it was a party planning committee. And I, I think it's an important aspect of the group, but I don't think it's all. And to Bob's point, I, I gave that fourth bullet point a little bit of teeth to say that, you know, we can also do work in like, what about this policy makes sense? And adding boards to that as well. I've talked to, for instance, Jamie Pinkham, who's like, I think that's great. I think it would be great to have like a little, little collaboration and say like, what is the police advisory board doing that might not fit in with this board? Like, how can you help us? And, and in general, I think boards can do that a lot more in the city. And then at the very end, what I did was, I put a kind of general, a general idea of you wanting people who might be historically marginalized to serve on the committee, right? Like, if, if you're looking at things that maybe this group might not be able to be aware of, like, what does the organization or the, or the committee actually look like? And I, I left it, I, I didn't do anything specific with it. I didn't put any specificity in there because I thought maybe, I, I didn't know what your intention was necessarily. So for me, looking at that, I just thought, that's something you can do. And if you guys want to iron that out later, if you folks want to iron out, you know, well, we want BIPOC, we want LGBTQI+, we want, maybe you want low income, or maybe you, you know, maybe you want women to represent.
Good idea.
I, I didn't know what exactly you were looking for, and so I thought it was important to kind of leave that open. And then just that, actually, this was another Preston Fuller point that he gave me. He's out of town. I don't, I don't go to his church, but I talk to him a lot. He, he just said, you know, why didn't, why isn't it a little longer? So what I did was I looked at the police advisory committee, or police advisory boards... So what I did was, I looked at the police advisory committee, or police advisory boards, sorry, and they had a few longer terms, and that's something you could obviously change, but I just wanted to reflect the idea that it's good to have people in space longer, like, you can do a lot more. My wife worked for a congresswoman for a long time, and every two years, she's up for election, so one year she did work, and the next year she was campaigning, and one year you can't do much, right? So those are kind of the changes I made, and it was rare praise for Dominic for handing me the, or for letting me have the word document out.
Rare, rare clerk praise.
Why are you not advocating for term limits either? Is that what I hear you saying?
Yeah.
Can I, oh, are you done, sir?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Dom, can I ask a question? Usually we do three-year terms, why did we decide not to do three years? So we would stagger, a couple people would be three, three years, with three years left, three years with two years, you know?
Just to clarify, I think that, I think the police commission is three ones, three twos, and three threes, if I'm not mistaken.
I was just trying to keep the math simple.
That's, yeah, that's to normally set up a board, we stagger terms, and eventually everyone's three.
Three years.
But typically try to have only a third of the board up at any given time. So when boards are created, it's only one, two, three, and the ones who are one have to go up again, but if they get three-pointed, they get a three at that point. So you stagger when you create a new board.
Okay, another comment?
I would just, I appreciate you considering this, and I appreciate your willingness to listen to other points of view, and what I would suggest is a question, which is how you think groups become marginalized, if not through a system? It's not through individuals and their own biases. They are part of the problem, obviously, but it's through a system that creates these mechanisms that allow these wrongs to continue going on, decade after decade after century. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add, Jim, have you ever seen the movies, Zootopia?
Yes.
Okay, that's like a great example of how it was established.
Comment?
Just state your name, please.
Yes, I'm Jeffrey Nelson, and I just, I'm also a former proofreader, but not as illustrious as the job that Ryer did. I just had some guidance to offer in terms of, there are some words that are very tricky, the meaning is slippery, and I just had some, for example, there's imply and infer, right? They're sort of natural opposites, and many of us have had discussions, ardent discussions, maybe with a partner, maybe with someone else, about whether they inferred it, or whether they implied it, whether we inferred it, right? So that's a, sometimes it's a slippery border, and I think, I think the word that might cause, you know, explicit versus implicit, those are natural opposites, I feel, and there's, there's a lot of the ills of society that is, everybody agrees upon, there's no controversy over whether a burning cross on someone's lawn is explicit. It's, it's the, and that's the tip of the iceberg nowadays, and it's all that other stuff that's under the surface, it's all that other subconscious stuff, besides the conscious stuff that everybody agrees on. So I think that it's kind of a dual, it's a dual-edged sword, it's, yeah, it's debatable, it's slippery, it's argumentative about some of the stuff that's under the surface, but that's the nature of it, is that it's, it's in place all the time, and at this point in the, in the system, no one has to have the intent. You know, the definition of sort of this, of the system is that it operates regardless of someone's feelings and intentions. And so that's what, so that's what's so insidious about it, is that it requires no one to actually be personally, you know, offensive or malicious for someone to have malicious impact. And so whether that's something you take more responsibility for or less, obviously that's, that's a matter of, you know, I guess, personal taste or personal performance, but anyway, I just thought I'd offer that. Sometimes it's, it's easy to, because words are tricky and it's the English language, sometimes words mean their exact opposite with one word, and that's a whole nother, you know, comment and whatnot, but sometimes it's, you know, it's helpful to have that contrast there.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
You got a hand up on the Zoom whenever you want to.
Can you tell me who that is?
It is Winnie.
Well, Winnie, how are you today? Three times in one day. Can you hear me, Winnie?
She's muted.
Winnie, you're muted.
Winnie, can you unmute yourself?
Winnie, can you hear us?
She raised it a while ago.
Thanks, Mike.
Sometimes those hands go up inadvertently, anyway. I've had that.
Winnie, we're going to move on, like, hold on.
No, Bebe, Bebe's hand is up.
Bebe, you're muted, if you have something to say.
All mine doing now? Can you hear it?
We can hear you.
Hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to address concerns about implicit bias, and I'm coming from a seventh generational Vermont, I'm white, I'm privileged, I understand that, but I also have all of a sudden become elderly, and I got to tell you, I have never experienced so much implicit bias and marginalism as when I broke both arms this year. I mean, the medical system treated me as a helpless, old, unable woman, and I just was appalled at how ingrained that was, that they couldn't accept that somebody of my age was out there hiking, biking, working. So I, to the gentleman that was concerned about implicit bias, I mean, it's there, whether you're black, you're marginalized, historically marginalized, or somebody like me who's white and privileged, but I unfortunately have reached the ripe old age of 71, and all of a sudden, I'm over the hill, I'm worthless, I'm not there. So I just wanted to give that as an example, and I don't know if it's helpful or not, but I did want to share that. Thank you.
Bebe, if you're still there, I'm 68, I've spent the last two years in and out of hospitals and rehab facilities, and to a certain extent, I agree with you, but I guess I wasn't made to feel that way, so I don't agree that I was treated the same way, but thank you for saying that.
Bebe, thank you.
Yep.
Winnie, are you able to get on?
Yes, I am.
There you are.
Hi, Winnie.
How are you today?
I am wonderful, and you?
Good, thanks.
Okay, great. Well, I want to, I want to give my opinion of implicit bias, it's something that is extremely personal, because each of us, we have a different, different experience, and so we can only react to our own, how it made us feel. It's cultural, it's environmental, it is definitely colored, black and white, because, for example, I lost a lot of weight, and if I go into TJ Maxx, and the new people that don't know me, but follow me around the store until someone said, oh, that's Spanish, she comes here all the time, then, then it changes. When we leave the store, we have to hold on to that receipt until you get home, because a coroner, Kevin, could easily say, oh, she didn't pay for that, and it's a different world game. So yes, there is systematic, systematic problems that we need to address, and not have to go, oh, no, it doesn't, oh, yes, it does, I beg to pardon, oh, yes, it does. Period.
Thank you, Winnie. Okay, any other comments on this? Keep in mind, we're not voting on it, come on up, please. We will, we will continue to discuss it and move forward till the next meeting.
My name is Deborah Thayer, I just wanted to express my support for this program, and to express my support for changing to include the word belonging.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
To use the word belonging instead of diversity.
Good. Thank you.
Angie Stern, word four, for this committee or board or whatever we make it, I find it very important who sits on it, and I think, just straight up, if there's a white man on this board, he better be queer, he better be trans, he better be disabled, he better be something, because this is what we're talking about, and, I mean, just like what when, when Bebe mentioned, I was just treated poorly, like I'm basically dying, when she's just going to recover and go on raging, had a lot to do with her being a woman, and, and I just wanted to put that out there, because it wasn't recognized in what you said back to her, like, oh, I wasn't treated that way. Well, again, like, you really need to recognize the, who you're talking to. Thank you.
I didn't realize that she meant that as a gender thing, she was talking about old, being made to feel old, and, but I didn't realize she meant it as gender.
It all overlays, it all works together, intersects, being, being female, being disabled, being queer, I mean, it being black, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Angie. Any other comments? Any on the, on Zoom chip? I don't see any.
I don't see any hands up.
Okay. Once again, thank you all for your input, we will continue to rehash it, and come back with something that we can move forward with, hopefully at the next meeting, so thank you all. We're going to move on to item number five, which is police department policies, there is an adjustment to the agenda, which we will not be discussing, item number C tonight, that was not meant to be on the agenda, so we will be looking at five A and five B, and both of these are policies being presented to be approved, so. Chief Lamont, thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, and yourself?
Good. These will be relatively quick, so body worn cameras is the first one. Most of you probably know, we were one of the first agencies in the state of Vermont to have body worn cameras, so the policy was in place many, many years ago, we just updated it. The only thing we really added, under purpose, the one line that's by itself, use of body worn cameras complies with Vermont S-219, we added that one line. As Mr. McCarthy probably knows, that all agencies have to have body worn cameras soon, so, but again, we were one of the first agencies in the state to have them, so I wanted to add that line, just so it becomes clear as why we have a policy, why we have body worn cameras, but again, we've had them forever. The only other line I really added, under permitted and prohibited use, on page three, one A, all calls for service, even if citizen contact is not expected, that's the only thing I added there, and the reason for that was, prior to this, it was everything else that's listed, being all traffic stops, investigatory stops, arrest a person, searches and such, but I added the top lines, because often you call it to something suspicious in nature or something like that, and you don't expect to see anybody, quite honestly, it's a noise behind somebody's garage, or whatever the case may be, and you inadvertently do come in contact with somebody, so we added this line, so that anytime you get out of the cruiser now, whether you're expecting to see anybody or not, you can activate your camera, so we have it. That's really the only thing we added there, and that's pretty much it. Other than that, this, this has been in there. We highlighted page five, tagging our recordings, that bold section, officers shall tag body worn camera recordings when officers involved in a criminal investigation as lead investigator. The reason for that is, data costs us about 30 grand a year, it self overrides if you don't tag it within 60 days, so this requires officers to tag it, so that doesn't get written over if it's a criminal case. So criminal cases, typically, we have to tag it anyway, because they're sent to the state's attorney, but now we're asking them to tag everything that has any importance to it, to make sure it doesn't get overwritten. It does still have some onus on them, but we can't, we can't keep everything, because it'd go from $30,000 a year to probably three or four times that, so, but it does put the onus on them to tag anything that's got criminal, criminal nature, anything that could be controversial in nature, and we look at, and that doesn't count, use of force, those are automatically tagged by us, but it's anything that really come in contact with somebody, and they think it should be tagged, and we're pretty, we're watching it pretty closely, and we haven't had that yet, where we've had to find something, and oh, no, oh, no, it's gone, but we want to have it in the policy to make sure that it's written down, that the onus is on them.
So how long does a normal footage last?
Like I said, it depends, it's 30 and, 30 and 90 days, depending on the data that's covered, but you can get 90 days at most before it overrides, but then it's gone, so, and it's so expensive to store it, and that's, until somebody comes up with a better technology, that's the issue.
Could you educate me about five dollar body camera, how is that charged?
How is it? So it lasts for 12 hours on your person, when you take it off, at the end, so they put it on at the beginning of the shift, we run 12-hour shifts, they take it off, they throw it in a, it's just a block charger, which charges a bunch of them, as soon as they drop it in there, it downloads everything that happened that day, and it charges at the same time. They can take it off prior to that 12-hour shift and drop it in, if they need to download something quicker, but it does both at the same time, and those are for your body. For the cruiser, they have to, actually have to take a thumb drive out, and bring it in the office, and download it, until we get in our new building. Our new building is equipped, as soon as they pull the cruiser up to the bays, it automatically downloads for them, and that was a huge investment we did, so that, we're getting rid of thumb drives, because we used to have VHS tapes, that tells you how long I've been around in this, then went to disk, now we're USB, all three of those have, are problematic, so now we're going to a totally automated download system, so there should be no issues, so...
You tried beta, huh?
What's that? Yes, I did not have beta, I did have VHS, though, which was obviously horrible, so...
Sometimes on the national news, you see where a police officer in a big city deletes or doesn't turn on their camera when they get into a crucial situation, what happens?
We can't delete them, ours is impossible to delete them. You can shut them off, you can override and shut them off.
What happens to the officer if you, he should have had it on, he or she should have had it?
Our policy doesn't allow them to shut them off, so then it comes a policy violation, but they can't, there is a button to shut them off, so I can, example of why you shut them off, ours lasts 12-hour shifts. Coming from an agency before, I would be, there were times I was on calls 24 hours, if I was on the special team I was on, I was on one for 36 hours, we had body, so we would shut them off, while we were taking time in the armored vehicle, you'd shut them off for time, when you come back out, because they'd run out. That team has now gone to, each member has three, so they can go 36 hours, because of one of the officers involved shootings, but that's a problem, they do only go 12 hours. They're very expensive systems. I don't see that with us, because, we run 12-hour shifts, we're not typically in a situation where you're going to go 24, 36 hours, but those do happen.
Just to clarify that, chief, so if I'm working, let's say I end up working 13 hours, I do have a backup that I can switch?
They can come in and grab another one, yeah, so those, they're dedicated to a person for ease of where's, hey, where's mine, but they can grab anybody else's, throw it in, and when they come in and download it, they're, they just have to change the tape into their, recording into their number. They can grab any one that's applicable or usable for anybody else, I have one dedicated to me, but anybody can grab it and use it anytime.
So if you do grab a recording off of there, you can store it for a definite amount of time, right?
Once you tag it, it's there till, I didn't, I can't erase it, the only way we can get rid of it permanently off the data system is through Axon, then I don't even know how you do that, so, I guess there's a system probably, but once it's tagged, I don't even know how you do it, we, there's stuff on there, it's been there since they've had Axon in that system, it doesn't cost, it's cost money per year, but once it's there, it's not like they charge you over and over and over and over, that it's there. So that data's been on there since they've had the cameras, I looked at a couple that were, you know, seven, eight years old, and it's still sitting there, so, it's a good system.
Chief, unless I, unless I missed it here, is there a, you don't turn on the cameras if you're dealing with a juvenile situation?
Correct, there's, so, there is exceptions to when you have a camera on, so by statute, you have to have a camera on in a school, on your body, you don't activate it, you just had juvenile, correct?
I'm talking about, if you're talking about a DCF?
Yes, no, you don't turn it on for that, you don't turn it on for victims, and...
So it says that in here somewhere?
Yes, there's exceptions to, there's probably five exceptions, anonymous tips, undercover work, strip, not strip searches, but searches of people, you turn it off once it's safe, there are exceptions to when you can shut them down, and the officer typically will voice why they're shutting them down, or they have to put in a report, but it's easier for them to verbalize it.
Right.
Council, any questions, any other questions?
How much does Jake?
The cameras aren't that bad, they're about, our Axon ones, about $1,800 a piece, 1,800 roughly.
And how many do we home?
I would say there's 24 in our bank, roughly, the in-car cameras are quite a bit more expensive, the watch guard, we have two different systems, and the reason we have two is because when you put the body mount in your chest, and you're in your car, all you see is the steering wheel, so it's worthless for the car.
Both of these went through the advisory committee?
And the reason we have two is because when you put the body mount in your chest and you're in your car, all you see is the steering wheel, so it's worthless for the car.
Both of these went through the advisory committee?
Hmm.
Marie, anything? James, anything else?
No, I'm sorry.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Chip, you gotta tell me, say, check the Zoom. Yell at me, yell at me. Uh, okay, so I entertain a motion to accept this as presented, so. Motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So the uh, the camera policy passes. Thank you, chief, and you had one more?
Yes, the second one is court protection order service. This is a brand of policy we didn't have prior, uh, till writing this one in the last few months. So court order protection order, or court protection orders are typically referred to as restraining orders. They're both temporary orders and permanent final orders. Uh, for those of you who don't know how those work, and several of you here in the legal profession, so you know, but um, anybody can go for a restraining order or a stalking order. Um, you apply for them, usually through a court clerk or through a judge, they grant them, and then it goes down to the police department to serve them. Those orders come out and typically initially as a temporary order, they're good for seven to ten, seven to ten days. You need to find who is then referred to as the defendant and serve that on them. Most of the time, their vacate orders means that person is vacated from the residence. There are usually stipulations involved, um, including most of the time weapons be removed from their house, and you give them a few minutes to gather some personal belongings and get out of their house or apartment. So, we get those a lot. Um, I looked today, just see how many we had on the screen, we had eleven sitting on our screen today, so those are very frequent for us. Um, so we made a policy, and the reason we made a policy was, uh, talking to Chris Lukens, talking to um, other people, Voices Against Violence is, as much as we serve these as as um, common practice they are for us, they're very much not common practice for the plaintiff. The plaintiff, um, they're very stressful, the reason they got these is because they're feeling threatened or harassed, or they have been assaulted already by their significant other, so when we go to serve these, o- oftentimes, that plaintiff is still in the residence, and oftentimes, um, they're expecting that we will arrive and we will escort the defendant out of the residence, and we do, we have to, the court order says that. And oftentimes, um, it's not done quickly enough for the plaintiff, one, and two, um, they feel that the police officers, um, take these lightly. What I mean by that is a recent complaint we had was that, uh, the police officers helped the gentleman carry stuff out of the residence, so shouldn't have done that, but I, the person was very irate, very upset about leaving his residence. Um, in this case, it was a male and female, um, and we, the officer helped bring stuff outside to get, to appease the situation, get the mail off, out of the house, um, in a de-escalation effort, and it worked, he left, but he was not happy about it. So, we made a policy that we're gonna serve these in a timely manner, which should always happen that way. We're gonna uphold the orders as they're written, which we always do anyway, and then the very, we we highlighted that two officers are always gonna go to these. These are very dangerous because you're you're literally pushing somebody out of what they believe is their property. You're taking their guns, which in Vermont is a humongous deal to people, and you're not gonna take sides, you're not gonna give the perception you're taking sides, and you're never gonna help somebody remove their property. Uh, it's on them to get their property out, and it's also these temporary orders, it doesn't give them the right to take their TV, their couch, and their their personal, it's their, it's their toothbrush and a couple pieces of clothing, that's what they take. Beyond that, they can come back and get it later, with the help of police, with the help of police officers, which is not us, by the way, it's sheriff's department, it's a civil process. Um, so that's what this this highlights, is that our job is to get them out peacefully and in a timely manner and make it make it much more professional. So that's why we wrote this, to make sure that the plaintiff understands that we are doing our job, um, but we're not gonna give the perception that we're playing around with the defendant, they're leaving and more qu- quicker than they had been. And honestly, this is written more on a complaint than anything else, to be honest, so.
Thanks, chief.
It was a result of a complaint.
Let me say, I I was very encouraged to read this, um, I was very encouraged by the enforcement of the orders. Um, and and I think included in that is, uh, if someone violates that order, the the enforcement following up. And I think we've all heard over the years that someone gets a, uh, gets a standing order and um, nothing happens, you know. So I I I'm encouraged by the fact that this is in place and that we're taking those serious and moving forward. Uh, with that said, it's also a sort of a double edged sword, and that we still need uh, the courts to prosecute as well, right? I mean.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know what the prosecution rate is on violation of restraining orders, but uh, they give out enough of them, and that we arrest for a lot of violations of them. I don't know where it falls after that, but.
Yeah, that's, that's a sort of tricky part. Um, anyone have any questions for chief or comments?
Is there support networks for someone that makes, okay, so do they, do they ever come with you to support that person there while you're trying to execute that other?
Not normally, so Voice Against Violence is a very active, very um, helpful resource. Coming to the scene, no. Typically, Voice Against Violence is involved prior and after. Um, a lot of times when we deal with these orders, um, and we can speak more offline about this, about how the process works, but they've been involved, and they're very involved. A lot of these though, are, were there, were just, the plaintiff's still there a lot of times, and the defendant, and and certainly, a lot of times, the plaintiff is no longer there and just a defendant. We will remove that person, whether it's male or female, whatever, and um, then the plaintiff will return afterwards. But Voices is a very active person, part of it, yes.
It may, it definitely makes sense to, you know, somehow notify the plaintiff that we're coming and, you know, you may not want to be there.
Yes, uh, ideally, that would be helpful, yes, because again, uh, in Vermont, eh, you could take a lot of things away from people, but the firearms is one that really triggers a pun, but really, they get really upset when you start talking about removing those firearms.
Any other questions for chief? Um, anyone in the audience have any comments on this? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to accept the uh, uh, court order. So we have a motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Um, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Chief, thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a nice evening. Uh, moving on, Chip, you wanna step up to item number six?
Thank you. First up, we have a second reading of an ordinance to add a thirty minute parking space to um, the space right in front of fifteen Center Street. Mary Norris is.
And that's one space?
Yep, one space.
Anyone have any questions for Chip on this?
Move to approve. The uh, the uh, the the ordinance for the thirty minute parking space in front of Norrisland Center Street?
I'll second.
Is it thirty or fifteen?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. Um, okay, motion, thank you Jim, seconded by Marie. Any questions for Chip? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Uh, second reading on window display.
Yes, this is the second reading of this amendment to add to the PHSO, um, certain standards for commercial window spaces that must also be met, uh, display windows shall be kept clean, inside and out, shall be repaired if there's any damage, and uh, in a building in a commercial zoning district, um, if the building's vacant, any display areas behind the windows shall be kept free of clutter, waste, trash, rubbish, or debris.
Is this the Hawkins ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
I knew I was gonna get one named after.
If only you got to pick your own.
If the building is vacant and the windows still need to be cleaned?
Yes, yep, yep, that that's only qualified in the second sentence.
There's a few violators in the city right now.
We know.
Now, is there, does downtown pay for one to go through and do all the businesses, because there was one, or do each business, each individual business?
We don't as a standard matter, no. Typically, the building owner of the business does it.
Yep.
I miss Jim a lot when he used to go around and do all the
There's a guy that does it now, that's a great guy. Okay, any other questions for Chip on this, and Chip will all sign it before we leave tonight?
Yep. Ready for you here.
Okay, I would entertain a motion regarding uh, the commercial window spaces.
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Marie. Any other questions for Chip? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the window, commercial window ordinance? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. I will um, I'll send around the sheet for signature.
I have it right here.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to um, clarification of parking in Service Industrial District.
Yeah, this is a first, first reading. First reading?
Yes.
First reading. Yeah, this is a first reading. Um, this just came from the planning commission, it's to amend our zoning. So as some context, um, there's a rule in our regulations that's always allowed parking in the front setback in the Service Industrial District, and typically not allowed anywhere else. Um, it's always been understood and in practice to allow parking in front of principal buildings in the Service Industrial District. It's the only district where we've allowed it, but that's been with the understanding that that's the one district where commercial and industrial uses tend to, we just sort of give them more of a free rein. In others areas of the city, we're more concerned with form, and we keep parking, much more subservient to what else is going on in the lot. Um, when we were looking at the regulations to get ready for permitting the redevelopment of Fonda, we found that um, when it comes to the rule that prohibits parking in front of the principal building, it didn't explicitly allow it in the Service Industrial District. It only allows that parking in the front setback. You really can't have one without the other, but just for the issue of clarification and making sure that there's no uh, ambiguity and confusion in the future, um, we've passed a rule that does say, yes, you can park in front of a principal building in the Service Industrial District, you can't do it anywhere else. So this amendment includes just the inserting the sentences where they need to go, for instance, uh, in section five one five point one, item D, and then in design review, so if there's any lot in the Service Industrial District that's also in a design review district, we also made the allowance in in the design review rules. So that's where you'll find the orientation to the street and the parking, those are in design review. Um, and then in the packet, you'll see, we we went around, we, you know, we showed that the redevelopment plan for Fonda is kind of counting on being able to park in that way. Lots of existing commercial and industrial lots today that have parking in front of the principal building. Um, so the planning commission passed it and has referred it on to you. First reading, just the first reading right now.
So, Chip, on some of the Google Earth photos where you have areas highlighted in red, do I take that to be those that would all be permissible parking?
Yeah, those are, those are
Existing and permissible.
The example of the thing we're trying to clarify that you can continue to do.
So this was a first reading?
This is a first reading.
The agenda says second, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just a technical error. The packet says first.
I know, I know.
We're half right.
Expect me to read this packet?
Any questions for Chip on this? Nope. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the uh, Service Industrial Parking Districts.
Excepted.
First reading. I confused you, I know, but
I was going off the agenda.
Same with me, yeah, there we go.
I'll move to accept the first reading.
So we have a motion to accept.
Do we have to move to accept the first reading?
It just happens, you could
Just happens.
You could move
Sure, I'll second it.
But it just sort of happens.
Then I would draw my motion and we'll, we'll assent to the second reading happening next month.
Accepted by consensus.
I will reprimand Mike after the meeting.
I I asked and nobody said, I was just trying to move things along.
I thought, I thought Chad's eyes were enough to to show you that, no, we don't do that. Uh, thank you.
So much for the McCarthy ordinance.
All right, let's move on, uh, Chip, you have one last thing, um, first reading, can I repeat?
This is a first reading, yes. Uh, another zoning amendment. You you might know that everything we do in zoning is enabled by the state. And the state law basically says how we can do things, what we can do, and anything in that law supersedes our local rules if they contradict each other. The state law, it's a, it's a Dylan's Rule, not a Home Rule type thing. That's called chapter one seventeen, that's what we call the statute that governs how we can do zoning. So a couple years, uh, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the state made some changes to how housing is regulated, and they are changes that had not yet been instituted in our zoning, and they supersede our rules. And we are getting around to making sure that our zoning reflects the new state legislation. We're also um, entering in some areas of clarification where we know that administratively and carrying out the rules over the years, that uh, some guidance in the, in our regulations would help us as we uh, as we look at projects. So, in section one of this amendment, what we've done is we've taken the uh, uh, an accessory dwelling unit, and we've uh, put it in the definitions. An accessory dwelling unit is really a special term in the state of Vermont. It's the uh, it was way back in uh, two thousand and four, the state passed a law basically saying that it that it should be really easy to have an accessory dwelling unit. So basically, you treat it as if the single family home owner occupied and the accessory dwelling unit are just a single family home by their, on their own. And there are some qualifying rules um, to approve that accessory dwelling unit, but overall, the state made it much easier to have one. And with this latest change, that we're doing this for right now, they made it even easier and clarified a few things about the ADUs. But, we always had the whole story of what an ADU was and how you review it buried in our, in our regulations. So the first thing we do is we take that definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is, and we insert it in the definitions where we define everything else. Um, that's really just kind of a formatting change, if nothing else. We're not changing the definition of what an accessory dwelling unit is. It's basically um, a dwelling unit, separate and of itself, can be part of the single family home, or it can be in a structure right next to the single family home, and it can either be nine hundred square feet in size, or thirty percent of the total livable area of everything on the property, whichever's bigger. And the, one of the changes the state made recently was that nine hundred square feet. So that's how you determine what a accessory dwelling unit is, so we're putting that in the definitions. In section two, section four oh nine, is where we've always had the standards for reviewing and approving accessory dwelling units. And those items stay, and much of this section is unchanged from what was already there, it's just uh, reformatted slightly. But, this is where you have the review standards that a single family home with an ADU shall be treated as if it's just a single family home, and that's the state law. So all the dimensional standards, the parking standards, everything, you just pretend it's a single family home. And a person is permitted to add an ADU if they have an existing single family home. But we add in some clarifying language that help with situations where, for instance, if someone wants to put an ADU in a structure that doesn't conform with the existing rules, then we give some greater direction on how that should be interpreted. Because that's where things get tricky that the state law didn't anticipate.
Is this what used to be, quote, quote, nevermind, I can't say that word, but we used to be termed as a mother-in-law apartment.
Yeah, right, exactly, the same idea. Same idea.
Chip, does the need um, for road frontage goes away? So, it used to be, I think, seventy feet for road frontage on a lot.
Um, basically, you would follow whatever's required for a single family home, and in the city, um, basically, the way the state law is written, if the single family home's already there, then it doesn't really matter about the lot size. You can, you can add the ADU no matter what, but we are still allowed to say, hang on a second, um, if you're gonna put that ADU in a structure on the property, we do need to make sure the structure follows all the, all the other dimensional rules for how close it is to the property lines.
Right, I was gonna say.
Because once an ADU's added, an ADU and the single family home are the single family home. and the single-family home are the single-family home. Once the ADU is added to a building on the lot, that building becomes a principal structure, just like the house itself. Because it now is a residential use. So we're a little careful about making sure that if you have a garage that's always been right on the property line with the neighbor, you can't just put an apartment up there all of a sudden and have your neighbor suddenly living right next to an apartment. That's where it requires you to, um, it gives some direction on how to deal with structures that are non-conforming and suddenly increasing their degree of use. It gets into the minutia.
Did I also hear you say that the state law will take precedence over?
Right. Yeah, so even, even though our rules don't look like this right now, the state law supersedes, the state law supersedes our rules until we pass this. At which point we are in congruence with the state law.
Have, have we had many instances of this over the past year or so?
Every once in a while, we'll get a proposal for an ADU and, um, we'll go through the motions and do the review. And right now, we've been following the state law where it supersedes our law. Uh, but typically, you always, eventually, you've always got to bring your zoning into compliance with changes in state law. Um, this, this one gave us some time to do it, but you've got to do it eventually. You've got to get to it. So we're finally getting to it.
What about parking?
Huh?
Parking.
Um, so that's one of the things they clarified. Clarified in the past, you were able to require extra parking for an ADU. The change made, the change made it very clear. It doesn't matter now. You have to treat the entire, entire thing as if it's a single-family home. So you cannot add any parking requirements above and beyond what you would require for a single-family home.
Which is 2.5, is that what I saw? Or that, that was two family home, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you have inadequate parking, you're allowed to decrease your nonconformity by right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Chip on this?
Well, there are a couple more things.
Oh, hey, hey, hey.
The, the others are faster. Um, basically, uh, section three, um, we need to allow someone to develop a lot that is otherwise too small if it's served by water or sewer. That's the rule. The change, the rule the state changed before, you could, you could prohibit any development on any lot that was less than an eighth of an acre or less than 40 feet wide. But the state made a rule change that now if you can connect it to water and sewer, we have to allow some sort of development on that lot, even if it's too small. But we have inserted some clarification based on court precedent that does still limit it to only the smallest use possible in that zoning district. So you can't take a lot that's too small and say, under the existing small lot rule, I can put a hotel here. No, no, no. You can only basically propose the thing that would use, that would require the least space under our rules, which is technically normally a single-family home.
With a, with an accessory apartment?
And no parking?
No. No, no, no. No, because. On this one, on this one, if the lot's undeveloped, you, 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 they have to follow every other rule. Setbacks, parking, lot covered, everything. Which is the other thing that really, that really controls what people do on existing small lots. Because when you have this really tiny lot and they also have to follow the setbacks, they'll say, well, I probably can't put anything on this lot. So I'm just going to sell it to my neighbor. But, uh, yeah, in this case, if the lot's not already developed, it would have to follow all of the rules associated with developing on that lot. Except for the fact that it's just too small.
Sorry, Mike, I'd vote for you again.
You know, uh, I have to say, I was not one of the principal architects of that. You know, compromises have to be made in the course of.
We, uh, this city actually put a lot of, there were a lot of things in this original bill that were even much more heavy-handed than this. And we, we actually had an active role in making sure that these were the only things that came out of it.
I, I do actually, you also thank Chip, and I will extend my thanks to Chip and the Planning Commission for trying to make this, accomplish some of the goals of easing some zoning restrictions across the state so there can be more housing, which I think is laudable, but also to continue to have some reasonable local say in limiting how that new housing gets built so that we can maintain neighborhood character and the quality of life.
Yeah.
I, I think a lot of us have come to enjoy in our neighborhood. So Chip was down in the virtual State House and in the real State House on these issues a lot. I really appreciate that.
So section four, the DRB can no longer deny any application that would result in a total of four or fewer dwelling units on a lot, only based on character of the area. So if there are some neighbors who come in in opposition to a three-unit, new three-unit dwelling, uh, the DRB can't just deny it because the neighbors don't like it and say it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. They would have to find some sort of traffic rules or other impacts, um, design review perhaps, depending on where it's located, to deny it. And, uh, that's that change. So we just insert this into the section of our rules that talks about character of the area and conditional use review. And then the last thing is, uh, also following the state rule, the DRB cannot impose any conditions. When they approve something, oftentimes they add conditions about like, which direction people come into the parking lot or your hours of operation or various different things like that. Um, but you cannot restrict any approved development from having, uh, the, the ability to have an ADU or to develop an existing small lot. And there's, uh, so there's one thing, it's funny you should bring up parking, Tim. One thing that we missed in, in our parking table with the Planning Commission was that we do have some parking rules specific to ADUs. And we need to, we need to strike that out because we can no longer add additional parking requirements for ADUs. So I'm actually asking at first reading if, um, the City Council would accept this with that technical correction. It basically, it's not a substantial policy change because it's still just carrying out the state legislation we need to, which is that we cannot treat ADUs any, any differently now.
If, if we're just, if we're doing this to follow, uh, the new state statute of regulations, why would we be worried about whether we're going to a first reading or not? Won't we just approve it? I mean, why would, you know?
Well, it, it's a little bit because of the guidance, right? Like, the execution of this policy is going to happen in the zoning office. And the words that we put in here, we, we have some say over the flavor that we're.
Yeah, we've never, Chapter 117's never said you could do an expedited amendment when the state rules change. So I, we, I figure we have to just keep following the same amendment process, which is the two hearings.
It's going to end up being this is it.
Yeah, right.
Chip, you want to take out something, I think?
Huh?
You want to, we'll make one thing.
No, I want to, I want to add something, uh, which is to take something out, which is to take out the special parking rules specific to ADUs.
But to your point, Tim, I was gonna, I was gonna ask Chip to maybe go for a ride here one day and show me what the impacts could be to some of the neighborhoods. But is it worth our time to, to do it? Is automattened, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, because if I'm the attorney arguing for the person who just got denied and I get the state rules in front of me, I'm going to say, tough, we're doing it anyway because the state says we can.
Right. And we do.
It provides anything that you said.
As soon as these were passed, we brought it down in permitting and said, when, we never denied anything in violation of these state rules. We knew, we had these set aside so that if anything came up, Dave knew he had to look at the, at the state rule change too and to, to actually use that superseding our local regs. Until we make this change, then it's going to be in our local regs.
I mean, we've done some good things. I mean, the corner of, uh, Raynard and High was a problem on both corners with Bubby Gamash owned the, the one corner and, and then Anthony on the other corner. By buying those, I mean, they could have been.
Yeah. Just for a little bit of context, the accessory dwelling unit rule, a fundamental part of that is that the owner has to live there.
Either one.
Either one.
Yep.
But the owner has to live there. Uh, if the owner ever moves out, you cannot sell it as a duplex. And we, we have the ADUs. We, we look at homestead declarations to make sure that every ADU on file, someone's still claiming a homestead there so that we know there's an owner there. Uh, and if the owner leaves, then you suddenly have two units. We'd have to, we'd have to talk to whoever owns it now or whoever might have moved out and still trying. We've, we've actually gone after properties where the owner has left and they're still renting out both units. And we say, you can't do that. You're going to start accruing fines unless you move back in or shut down one of the units, take down the wall.
So let's just, uh, to your point, Chip, let's move forward with the same process or, or, uh, do the second reading at the next meeting. If anyone has any questions or clarifications with Chip, I, I still may take you up on a ride, Chip, and just to get a better visual of what the impacts could be.
We missed one?
Yes, we did.
Compact cars?
The other Pelkey ordinance.
You beat me, you beat me to it, Chip.
We did.
It was so compact, you'd be skipping over it.
Wrong order.
It was a giant picture, haven't we missed?
First reading, uh, in, in response to some City Council concerns brought up last month to add a compact car-only spot to the spot that is the closest to Hoyt Street on Main. Compact car under our rules is anything that's less, uh, 175 inches in length or less. And, um, which includes anything attached to the back or front of the car. And, uh, it's worked pretty well in other cases.
Including Hampton Lane as well, I think.
Yeah, that's a little technical correction. We now have a name, our first compact car spaces, we now have a name for the street in reference. So I just added it, Hampton Lane.
Okay, that's first reading. Any questions for Chip?
Thank you, Chip. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We'll vote on the Pelkey, uh, ordinance next week. Next month.
Next month, yeah.
Next month. Okay, um, item number seven, public hearing on to comply with new zone. That was it, right?
That was the one.
That was the one, yeah.
So we jumped ahead on that one. So moving to eight, which is Mayor's report. Chip and I spoke about the downtown board. We had an open seat and, uh, and an open alternate seat. So Chip, you had a conversation with both candidates?
Yeah, we have an open seat on the downtown board. Rachel Sink has resigned, uh, after doing some great service for us. And, um, we have a case where we have an existing alternate, Keith Longmore on the board, who said that he would like to go for the full board seat if the council was so inclined. We also have a brand-new candidate for the downtown board, Jeremy Perez, who owns, uh, the main squeeze. So, um, council could go a couple of ways with this. You could give one of these, uh, folks the full board seat. You could leave Keith as an alternate. You could assign Jeremy as an alternate. You could give Jeremy the full seat, keep Keith as an alternate. It's, it's, uh, it's really up to you. Do have some, uh, do have some recommendations on term expirations to keep the board balanced. It'd be good if the term, any terms appointed tonight ended in 2023. Uh, because otherwise, we'd end up with too many board members expiring in 2024 and would get a little out of balance.
When we interviewed, I wasn't one, but, um, individuals interviewed Jeremy, right? Was that, when we did an interview, was that before the alternate seat? I believe it was, but.
That was us three here and.
I was in on that, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
It would have been because Rachel hadn't left yet at that point.
I mean, my, my take is if you've had someone on the alternate seat and participating, then, and the seat opens up, I think, um, they shouldn't be able to have that option before, which Keith wants to do. We did interview, uh, Jeremy originally for the alternate seat. So I just, I think, uh, what I would present to the council is that we appoint Keith to fill the vacant seat and, um, and Jeremy to fill the alternate seat at this point. To expire in 2023, so.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim. Any other questions or comments?
So we still have an open alternate seat now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're doing a lot better on this board than we were six months ago, six, seven months ago, right?
Yeah, to, to keep an 11-member board fully staffed up is pretty good. And, and we got some active members. Most folks show up every month, so.
A lot of good work coming out of that. So, uh, motion on the floor and has been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes to appoint, uh, Keith Hearing none, motion passes to appoint Keith and Jeremy to the respective seats. Thank you. For me, actually coming out of that board was a recommendation, which I thought was excellent, which was a proclamation from the city recognizing BFA's outstanding athletes. So I will read it for folks. Whereas the girls' basketball team ended the regular season with nine wins and three losses as well as a championship title over Rice, and whereas the boys' hockey team ended their regular season with nine wins and one loss and a championship title over Essex, and whereas the girls' lacrosse team ended the regular season with 13 wins and four losses and made it to the state championship for Division One as well, and whereas the girls' softball team ended their regular season with 14 wins and two losses as well as a championship title over Essex. Now therefore, I, Tim Smith, mayor of St. Albans City, do hereby congratulate the athletes of BFA for a successful season demonstrating outstanding sportsmanship, given under my hand and the seal of the city of St. Albans on this third, we'll change the date, but 30th day of June 2021. Signed, Tim Smith. So I think it's great to acknowledge the, the youth of our community and the successes that they've had, and it's kind of a good year.
I think they all got a parade too, didn't they?
They had parade at Elmenhead.
Mayor, did I hear you say two championships over Essex?
Yes, I was going to mention that. So the, the, the game totals were down obviously because of COVID and how they worked through that, but congratulations to, to the coaches at BFA and all of the individuals. Okay, we're moving on to, I had a couple other things under my report, which was car show in conjunction the same day as the farmer's market proved to be a big success from all indications. I have not heard otherwise. I don't know if anyone else has. I know the farmer's market was very pleased with the turnout. I spoke to one vendor who thought they had three times the number of people in the park who participated and roamed the farmer's market. So that was, that was, that was great. It was a perfect day, and everyone I spoke to loved, loved the event, so I thought it went very well. Next one is sunflower festival on, it will be a concert down in the industrial park with Carol Ann Jones. For those who are interested, the date on that will be whenever the Friday, so Friday the 20th. Now, and there's no charge for that, donations would be accepted. So the sunflowers are in bloom, they're going to open it up for the public starting Monday. So people want to go down and visit, and they look great, they've come in very well, so. I think that's about all I had. We'll make the rounds here, we'll start, Marie, we'll start with you.
We had, as I said earlier, a neighborhood watch meeting last Tuesday. We had about 12 neighbors. We have some new neighbors in the neighborhood. And so it gave everybody kind of a chance to meet everybody, and it was very informative. We had two police officers there to address some of our concerns that have been happening in the, in the neighborhood. One of them being a noise ordinance, so that was perfect timing. And the officers were great, they answered a lot of questions. We're planning on following up with another one in six months. If we find that we need one more often than that, we'll, we'll do it. But in the meantime, it, it went well. People had a lot of good ideas, a lot of great input, some complaints, but overall, I think people are pretty, pretty satisfied with things, and it was, it was good.
So Marie, can you educate me, the old neighborhood watch model, was there, wasn't it people who used to roam the neighborhood and, and watch for activity?
Yes, yes.
Is that not the case anymore?
Well, somewhat. I mean, it, it, it entailed a certain surrounding area. So, I mean, yes, kind of, it's things people see all the time.
And there's no, you don't have any schedule of?
No, not really, just as, as we see it or as things come up, you know?
Just building community in your neighborhood, is what it is.
Yeah.
How many of these, I was surprised to hear, but I can't remember who told me. There was a, someone had a, they were working the cash register someplace and told me about that. I didn't realize it. Are there others going on? There was this one with you.
There's a handful, two or three, you know, say why, but they kind of come and go, you know, depending on the issues.
We, we hadn't had a meeting for a while. Kami used to do them at her house, and we hadn't had a meeting for a while because of COVID, and it kind of dropped off. And then one of the residents called me and said, hey, you know, we're having some issues and, you know, is there a chance we could have a neighborhood watch meeting? I said, oh my God, yes, absolutely. So I planned it on, on an evening that, that I knew we were going to be in town. And we had late refreshments, and it, it went really well.
So you chose not to go, you chose not to have the cake? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's true, we kept the lemon.
Marie, was that right at your house?
Yes, yes, backyard. And it was kind of interesting because one of the, one of the complaints from one of the residents happened to occur at the time of the meeting. So the officer, the officers were great. And the guy got up and he just looked over the fence. So all you could see was his head, you know, they, they obviously knew who he was because he's been parking on that street. And so he got real quiet again. So it, it was kind of, it was, it was good. And like I said, he had to do that a couple of times. So it was kind of like, you know, this is sort of the thing we're talking about. It was great that thing happened to be there and heard it. And luckily, it wasn't raining, so we were able to have it outside.
So that was a noise complaint, I was told.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, you can keep it down.
Anything else, Marie?
No, I think that was all I had to offer.
Okay, James?
I have nothing to offer for the council business at this point.
Chip, before I forget it, can you get me the addresses of the individuals who are leaving the downtown? I'll, I'll send the thank you notes.
Yep.
Chad? I'll go last. Michael?
Paving, after all these years, has made it up our way, and that seemed to go really well, so thanks to-
Woe is me, Mike, woe is me.
You know, we were very patient up on the street, and, you know, Marty didn't do his own street first, you know, our street. But that really did seem to go out, the crews in Public Works, and we work them all together. Really great.
They've done Fairfield Bishop three times in the last 10 years. Hey, you were going last, remember?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, class one. I wanted to tell everybody, if you didn't see it in the, the newspaper, a good friend of mine, Nick Cherick, made a film called The Ballad of Ethan Alien. Really funny, heartwarming, quirky movie that's about what it means to be a Vermonter, what it means to be an insider and an outsider. And he wrote a song and collaborated with Catch Seacor from the Old Crow Medicine Show. It's a really popular alt-country band. And it's, the song's hilarious, the movie is, I've seen little bits and pieces of it along the way. We're going to show it in the park on an inflatable screen on Thursday, September 23rd. So a couple of bands, including mine, are going to play starting at 6:30, and then when it gets dark enough, we'll throw on the projector on the screen and, and show the movie. It's a little over an hour, but it features people like Kaya Morris from Bennington and a diversity of different Vermont experiences and a funky cast of characters about what it means to be an Ethan Alien. It's just Nick's kind of weird, weird vision that we're all, Vermonters are all, all kind of weird. And it's, it's just great, and I really, I love what he's doing, I want to support it. So that's September 23rd. Would love to see some of the council there. It's going to be a fun little community event, I think.
Anyone else?
That's it, bring your man.
I would add, just like maybe think there's going to be a 9/11 ceremony for 20 years in the park as well. I don't know the time yet, but there'll be more information coming out of that. I would expect that our fire department would continue to hang the flag over Main Street as they have in the past, and there'll be more information, so.
Yeah, I went up to the Hardak Open House that they had a few weeks ago, or about a week ago, and I didn't see all of it, but, but that's a really nice facility, that Great Brown Lodge. It's going to be a very nice facility, plus we're going to have the pool. And also, as you walk around Hardak and up on the hill, they've got some good signage now that they haven't had. And the lower trails, the ones that I guess they use for some cross-country races, they're all beautifully maintained. And so I think that's a great asset for the city. Not to, not to mention also, which I don't do, the disc golf that is really quite popular now. So Hardak is really getting to be a nice showplace, and the people are using it more and more now. And also the dog park that's right there. So Hardak is getting more use than it used to, I think.
No doubt. So just to chime in on that, Afterglow is, what's the date?
September something.
September 12th. There'll be more information on Afterglow. And then I also saw on the news that UVM will be using Hardak for their cross-country, one, at least one, if not more than that. So that's, that's a great event.
They did that a couple of years ago, too.
Yeah, that's a great event for the whole team as well. Chip?
Word one's fine. I'd like to ask a question about where we at on Kingman Street?
Good question. Chip?
The water services are done, still finishing sewer services up on the bottom. But in the meantime, they're starting to add the gravel to leave all the streets. They're starting to more section the sidewalk and replacing those with the packed gravel as a temporary walkway in the meantime, which has worked out pretty well. And we're still planning on opening the street up in November.
Paved?
Paved. The-
Not final paved.
Not final paved. The nice final coat, the nice line strapping will happen next May when the temperatures are perfect. It won't be quite so nice in the fall, but it'll shut.
And we'll definitely, we'll not be doing the lights or anything this year?
Oh, street lights should be done this year.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I guess, yeah, the, as far as we know, they're ordered, they'll be here on time. They should be out by the winter.
Seems like it's slow going, isn't it?
They, they've got one crew on it, and they, they're working on it every day, but it did end up getting a little more involved with the sewer than we thought it would be, and that's the big holdup. That we were just going to treat the existing sewer and leave everything in place, but there were a lot of sewer services that needed full-on replacing. And it was too close to where the new water line was supposed to go, so the state made us move it over.
What's that, what's that due to our budget? Chip?
We, we're still within our contingency. We'll make it work. I'm talking to Tom about it, and based on the subsidies we got from EDC on top of the loans, we're still within the bonded capacity for the, that EDC funding on the utility side.
Tim, anything else?
Nope, not far. Thanks for the update, Chip.
Mr. Spooner?
Well, I debated whether I was going to say anything or not, but I am going to. So the last few months, I haven't been in the greatest of places mentally, and I thought about not coming tonight, but there are a couple of things on here I really wanted to make sure I voted on, how to say. But in the end, I want to say, I want to thank my six fellow board members. I think we have spirited debate, we respect each other, and whenever I leave this meeting, I feel like we've made a little bit of a difference. We don't always get it right, but we're open to listening to each other, and I appreciate that. So, thank you. That's it.
For what it's worth, we're here for you, so.
Thanks, Chad, wonderful. Before we go, before we get on, move on to the final stuff, we were all notified this week of the passing of one of our Public Works supervisor, Rob Green's son, Corey, who was 31 years old, passed away in Texas. And Rob came to work for the city three years ago, two years ago, and has been a great actor. He came from, came from the Burlington Public Works Department. And Rob and his wife Marion are just wonderful people, and they're going through a tough time. So I just wanted to make sure we take a moment of silence in memory of Corey Green, so. Thank you. So let's move on to approval warrants, Mr. Hawkins?
Motion to approve warrant, 7/31/21.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Jim to approval, approve the warrants. Anyone have any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I just say again, thanks, Tom, for limiting those to the ones that are really necessary? It really helps out, and it makes that a breeze. It makes an absolute breeze not do those warrants. We used to loathe them, doing those things, and now it's, you know, it's a breeze to do it. Yeah. Motion to approve minutes, 7/12/21.
I have one correction on that. I was supposed to have been there, and I was, so I just wanted to make sure that's-
On minutes of 7/12/21?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a motion by Tim, second by Jim, with the correction from Marie. All those in favor of the minutes with the correction, say aye.
Aye.
I'm in abstaining since I was a-
I'm abstaining.
Motion to approve minutes of July 19, 2021.
Motion from Jim, sir, second?
I'll second.
Second by Marie. All those in favor, say, excuse me, any changes or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
I was abstaining for not being there.
Any opposition? Well, you were there, you were there.
Special meeting?
Yep, you're on hold.
Oh. I was trying to get on there, but I wasn't there.
I think we can give you credit for that.
Thanks for doing that, Jim.
All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything, motion to adjourn. Uh, wait a minute, I want to, um, we still have 12 minutes. Motion from Chad to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you all.